Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a continuation now of the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. We're in the DeLeo Senior Center. We just came out of executive session. Well, that's where we'll call as we came out of executive session.
Counsel Tassanari.
Here.
Counsel Costigan.
Yeah.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Yeah.
Counsel Swob. Present. Counsel DeRoz.
Here.
Vice President Belcher. Here. President Latieri.
Yeah. All right. Meeting will continue. We had minutes from December third. They've been circulated. There were motions to approve. Motion by Counsel DiMarco.
Second.
And by Vice President Belcher. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. General information and recommendations. I do have, obviously, we see a huge presence and we thank them every day for what they do, but we have a huge presence from the Winter Fire Department. Was there someone that wanted to speak on behalf of the Winter Fire Department? Yes. Please state your name, precinct.
Kevin Norman, Precinct Three. I'm also the president of the Winter Fire Fighters Local Ten Seventy. The Local Ten Seventy Fire Fighters are deeply disappointed in the town council decision on December third to not second the motion that was made to open the discussion for the vote on the proposed firehouse location. This project is critical for the health and safety of our firefighters and equally important to the residents of our community. Your unwillingness to move forward does not reflect the urgency this issue deserves. Notice it gives us confidence in the push and work to bring this building to fruition. We strongly urge the town council to prioritize this topic on the future agenda and ensure the firehouse that is moving question is back on the next ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from Winter Fire that would like to speak? Winter Fire.
Both sides.
Yes.
To leave command of Precinct Three, I want to give the residents and the councils a brief history of the early nineties. You don't know the history. Early nineties, we perched us the old post office and built a brand new precinct station. Standing yard, it was beautiful at the time. We were told, you're next, don't worry. Then we built a new D V W building. We were told, you're next, don't worry. Then we built this senior center. You guys are next, don't worry. Nope. Ford Bank School, you're next. Cunningham School, you're next. Middle High School, you're next, don't worry. Nope. After that, we spent ten million dollars on a football field. Okay? At the time that we did that, when we did it as a community, a new firehouse would have been eighteen million, so we were almost there. All right? We're always told, you're next. All I want this council to do is put it on the ballot. Let the citizens decide. Let them make the decision. After the last vote failed, dozens of residents called me. I'm sorry if I didn't know. We want to build a new firehouse, but we don't like the location and we don't want to spend six million dollars. And all the projects that I just talked about were built on town land besides the precinct station. They said, we want to build a new firehouse on town land, so let's put it on the ballot, hold them accountable, let them keep their word that they want to do this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on? Yes.
Myself, I'm David Higginbotham. I'm the captain of the Winter Fire Department and also the vice president of the local ten seventy. I do want to make it known right now that I'm not speaking on behalf of the Fire Department or the local, speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of this town. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all the citizens of the town for your continued support. You guys tell us, Dave, how many you see you guys, how much you appreciate us and everything that we do for you guys, and I truly appreciate that. It means a lot. Keeps us going and keeps these guys going. Apart from everything that we see you do, it means a lot. I will say to the town council, we do, I do not feel that from you guys. Mr. Tassanari, when you're running for that seat that you're sitting in right now, you stop by both firehouses when we have the open house for people to come in and see the poor, the poor situations that we're in. At that time, I thought that you were an advocate for us. Last meeting, there was no motion, no second. I'm beginning to believe that that motion that you did was replicable again. I hope moving forward, your actions show that you care about the Fire Department and these men that stand behind me today. I believe in you. I'm on your side. Please do the right thing. Mr. Costigan. Let me let people know, part of supporting the Fire Department is increasing training, providing us training, ensuring that we're in a living and healthy environment. We give you guys the most. Thank you for providing training at Deer Island. Last meeting, though, no motion, no second. It was a shock to me and to other people. We need you to stand up. We've talked about the poor situations we're in. You said you understand them. Please do the right thing and help us get towards a healthy environment. Mr. Munson, I think you would agree that we support, myself including you, small businesses in town, including your own. Every time I walked in, it'd be the photography or something, without feeling you brought up a need for a new firehouse. Last meeting, no motion, no second. If you believe that there's a need for one, we need you to be an advocate. Sitting in silence is not the right thing to do.
We will get it done.
Ms. Belcher, I would like to thank you for your continued support in making the motion. We've had many volunteer, many fundraising events, which sold many items that helped increase funds for, that we can donate to the town, which showed up each morning. Thank you for being an advocate and I hope we can rely on you to continue to do so. Town Council President, thank you for bringing that up and inviting someone like you to make the motion last week. That's all. Mr. Marco, no motion, no second. Mr. Aiello, no motion, no second. I understand you have a finance background. In the early nineties, a new firehouse would cost three million dollars. Right now, we're looking at thirty to forty million dollars. That's three times to twelve times the amount of what it was in the nineties. Taking this can down the road will hurt those who aren't fixin' on this town. So it's only getting more expensive if you keep waiting. Please do not put people in that financial situation, myself included. No motion, no second if you were. I'm sorry I can't read your name. I don't have my glasses, but no motion, no second. I would be, I'm gonna be honest, I'm heavily disappointed in you guys. For those of you I know and I don't know, disappointed across the board. I hope this turns around and we can count on you guys to do the right thing. For the people in this community, please know regardless of the situation that we're in, we're gonna show up for you guys. When I first got on, we had a call, the bay doors couldn't open. That's how bad our firehouse was. We had manly pocket pen and claw guys down to lift the bay doors up in order to get to the call. I want to let you guys know that in fact, the response times that we can get to you guys and it truly matters the level of care that we can provide. When you guys call us to pump out your basements, know that we too are potentially pumping out the basement in the beach station. When that floods, we get sewage from the drainage system with all trash, including used condoms. It's gross, but it's true. There are gentlemen back here that had to take out used condoms on their shift, pump out their basement, and then show up to your house and ensure that you guys can provide mobile care and safety for you too. When you guys have water damage, know that we do too. We're leaving to help you guys because we understand how bad it is. We don't want you to go through what we're going through, which now is like a black mold and mildew throughout the firehouse. We just had asbestos removed from the firehouse this past week. One of the things that they missed was a wide open area that one of the firefighters put a punching bag over so no one would fall through. However, it wouldn't fall through because the forge was rotted out. That asbestos came up throughout the area that we currently live and reside in. Again, we will show up for you guys time and time again, regardless of what it is. There's sand in the Fire Department, shower after an hour. We don't have the ability to shower after an hour. We also respond to that blade more often than fires. I have worn bodily fluids from blood, vomit, pee, and poop for communities in this town, and I will wear them again, so have all these guys. We can't all show up and take a shower at once, so while one person showers, two to three others have to remain in those fluids. Are you guys okay wearing those from a stranger you don't know? Because you're okay not having a discussion about the location of the Fire Department, not even the fire department itself. I can tell you firsthand, these guys have responded for my son, within minutes they were there, under two minutes. They will do anything for anyone without knowing them, whether they're creed, color, race, gender, and all the above. They're phenomenal, the guys. So if you guys won't know or don't want to have discussion, do it in front of them. I want to thank all of you guys for everything that you guys do. You guys are phenomenal. If they forget to tell you, know they are. I believe in you, so does the community, and we hope that you guys step up and do your part as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for the Winter Fire Department or on behalf of the Winter Fire Department? And I would like to, again, thank you all for coming. This is an incredible showing and, you know, we will put, and you have my word, we will put a fire station on the ballot and, you know, some people vote yes and some people vote no, and regardless of how they vote, these fine firefighters will be at your house if you voted yes, if you voted no. We understand it's a sacrifice. This has been something that's been, you know, it's been a hundred and forty odd years since we've built the fire station. It's been over forty since we have adamantly looked to build a new fire station. Everything we do costs money and it affects us and it has consequences for us, but the four hundred and fifty odd dollars out of four hundred and seventy-five odd dollars a year that you're gonna spend to make sure that we give them a little something back to what they're giving us. They're giving us safety, they're giving us comfort at night, they're there for us in our moment of need, and the conditions that they have to do their jobs in day in and day out is just absolutely deplorable. So I know the citizens of this town usually get it right, and I know that they will support the Fire Department and will take the responsibility too for maybe getting the location wrong and the cost wrong, but we've addressed both those issues, and I hope to have an answer tonight that we will be putting something on the ballot. Is there anyone from the council that'd like to speak on this issue before we move forward? Counsel DiMarco.
Hi. The reason I didn't make a second last week is because I was looking at the votes that came in for the Fire Department and then for multiple votes we've had where the people have said no. I wanted to have a clear understanding of what the alternative was if people voted no again. I plan on voting in the affirmative for this tonight, but I wanted to make sure that there's an increase to the, to the capital plan, so that way there's maintenance, whether it passes or not, that there's additional money going towards maintenance, because we have to take care of what we have if we don't get what we want. So I wanted to see what the alternatives were before I voted, but I absolutely intend to put this on the ballot. So, you know, it's a yes for me. In fact, I don't know if Town Council President would do this, but I would entertain a motion to go out of order and take up this issue right now at the beginning of the meeting since we have the Fire Department here.
Well, let's get through this first. Let's get through this discussion. Counsel Munson.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dave, for your, I thank all of you guys for the work you do. We will get it done. Small delay, but we will get it done on our watch, and I give you my word.
Counsel Tassanari.
I can't look at any of you guys in the face and give you my word that we're gonna give you a new firehouse anytime soon, because I don't know how the vote's gonna go when we put out another thirty-six to forty million dollar override. And that's really where we're gonna sit with the community when we have another override, just a few more items down the list here. Not gonna promise something I can't deliver. I'll vote for it tonight, for sure, but I think we need to go back to the drawing board on possible renovations, especially when I hear folks in Precinct Three and Precinct Six talk about not wanting to lose their, their firehouse, what they consider their firehouse on the beach. They're coming out and voting no because they don't want an additional forty-five or thirty-second increase in response times to get to their neck of the woods. And when it comes to public safety, I personally can't blame them. Lucky for me, I live like less than a block from the Pauline Street Firehouse. I'll be only a couple of blocks from Walden Street or Pauline Street if it goes to the, to the middle school. But since 2018, I know that there's some older data that says, well, there's no way we can renovate and rehab the existing fire stations that we have, but since 2018, Cambridge has renovated eight stations, two of which with new HVAC and personnel and decontamination units. Everett did a three point five million dollar renovation on a building built in eighteen nineteen to remove all their asbestos, to include in-house laundry, gear, decontamination, and new living quarters. Arlington Central Station, built in nineteen twenty-six, did a full renovation around the same goals for three, five point three million. Brooklyn renovated four stations to accommodate for larger apparatuses, moving living quarters, better HVAC systems, and those four station renovations cost twenty-one million, plus they did a new station for twenty-two million. Boston Engine Fifty-One, built in the early nineteen hundreds, including improving the apparatus bay and accommodate new equipment and new living quarters. Chelsea did a station built that, that was built in eighteen eighty nine, eighty-seven for an improved apparatus bay and living quarters, decontamination, HVAC, and emergency generator. And New York did the same thing to a building built earlier in the eighteen hundreds to renovate to accommodate new modern apparatus, gear, decontamination, and HVAC systems to make it livable, to make it better places for you guys to live, for you guys to get back to and clean up. And I'm afraid that if we put it out for another thirty-six or forty million, we're gonna lose again and we're gonna be another six months behind getting you guys what you deserve, what you need, every day. But I'll vote yes to put it back out there. I just think we need to go back to the drawing board if it shouldn't pass and talk again about renovations and rehabilitation of the existing stations that we have.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I know a lot of these guys standing before me right now, and you, I think you know me fairly well. Thank you, Deputy Calandra, Mr. Higginbotham. I personally want to apologize for the town council and the no second vote. I do apologize. I think getting caught up in the moment, as Mr. DiMarco mentioned here, with all the issues facing the town here, I think we may have lost our way a little bit with regards to what is important to this town. And I'm gonna tell you that, you know, when anyone's in trouble in this town, who are they calling first? It's the Fire Department. And again, I'll, I'll inject the MDR into this. As you know, I'm a safety manager down there. A lot of you guys, I've seen all of you arrive to Deer Island when we're in trouble down there. Medical issues, fires, anything unknown, believe me, when we're watching the clock when you guys are rolling, it seems like an eternity. But once you guys show up and roll through that front gate, there is a sigh of relief. The same thing applies to people who live here in town. There is no excuse why this town can't pony up. Put in a dead exclusion for the Fire Department and, you know, Deputy Colon, you talked about the dead exclusion way back when the MDR gave this town twenty-five million dollars in nineteen ninety-two. And again, the firefighters took a backseat for ten years. Two point five million dollars a year, we couldn't get them a fire station. It's appalling. And again, you see me up here every week talking about the infrastructure and this and that. Here we are, thirty, forty years later, the Fire Department's still out on the limb. So I understand your frustration. I'll do everything in my power to support a fire station for you guys, dead exclusion, so forth, so on, because I'm gonna tell you right now, the MDR employs a tremendous amount of winter personnel who work down on Deer Island, and if something goes drastically wrong down there, and again, all of you know what the hazards are, we're gonna call on you guys first. You're the first responders in, and then Boston arrives after the fact, because you guys are the closest required by law. You show up first, save our asses, and then Boston rolls in, and you do the courtesy thing with regards to stepping down and allowing Boston to take over. That in itself is, is an accomplishment. So again, I can't say more about the Winter Fire Department and the need for them, a need for a new fire station, and, and their ties to the MDR with regards to saving our asses down there if something goes drastically wrong. So again, I thank all of you, I apologize, and again, we'll get this over the goalpost. Thank you.
Counsel Aiello.
I am a hundred percent certain that every member of this council wants you to get a new fire station as quickly as possible. You should have no doubt about that. I think a lot of the hesitation from two weeks ago is about making sure whatever we put on the ballot can win, because it's not okay to say, well, we got something and it ends up failing. My worry about the two alternatives that we have right now, and let me be clear, I'll defer if the council wants to put this on, I'll select one, we'll see whichever one wins, we'll put it on the ballot. I think taking a little bit of time, and I'm talking about three weeks, to de-risk and make sure that there's no surprises between now and the day of the election, which would drive people crazy and make it harder to win the vote, would be time well spent. But if there's not confidence in the council that we can do that and make sure we have our facts right and that the estimates we have today, the estimates are gonna be the same when we put them in front of the voters, I'm okay with that. I will vote for the one I prefer, whichever one wins I will support, but my motivation has been to try to make sure whatever we put on is de-risked enough that we're certain about our numbers, we're certain about the impacts, and we're certain we can get it to a yes in this community, which has not been a typically easy thing to do for any kind of override or dead exclusion.
Any other comments? Counsel Swob.
I, sorry. I, in the last go-around, I held, I held meetings at where I live in hopes that I could get this through to the people that, in my precinct, that would vote for it. And we held a great meeting and it had Fire Chief here and Jim came to Seal Harbor, which by the way, I know you show up at Seal Harbor more than you show up in most places, and it was important. I'm not, I'm not the person to look at toward, to determine whether it's, whether we've done the right, whether we have the right location at a firehouse. I'm not an expert on fire homes, firehouses. So I will too vote, and we just, we kind of paused last time at last meeting, because I think I agree with what the rest of the council has said. It's not that we don't want a firehouse. We will get a firehouse through, hopefully. At least we will vote for it, and we will hope that it goes through in the town. And we just want to make sure that it's the right place, the right thing.
Counsel DeRoz.
Briefly, because we haven't met yet, I'm John DeRoz, the counselor from Precinct Six. Nice to meet you. I live at the corner of Coral and Shirley, so I walk by the firehouse that's four blocks down the street from me all the time. I see you guys there, and I just want you to know, not only from me, but from all the residents that live in the beach streets around me. To Max's point earlier, we love having you there. You all are huge servants to the town, and I'll just echo what the counselors have just said. Have no doubt in your minds and in your hearts, this town council wants a new firehouse. There is no question. I'll just quickly echo what Counsel Aiello said a minute ago. I chair the Finance Committee. We want to make sure that when we put this to a ballot, that it's been fully vetted and that the amounts that we have are solid, so there's no surprises. We need to tee it up for the best possible chance to pass. So never read any hesitation. I actually had the same conversation with Chief Wiley not too long ago. Never read any hesitation from us as not wanting a firehouse at all. In fact, never read that hesitation from the town, that the town doesn't want a firehouse. It's really about making sure we choose the best option, that the finances behind it are solid. So you have my commitment that that deliberation and those choices will happen as quickly as possible, because we owe it to you. So thank you for what you do, and you have our word.
Thank you, counselors. I will entertain if somebody would like to, because we have, again, well over a dozen and a half firefighters here who have taken time out of their incredibly busy days and would like to give them the opportunity to leave early if they'd like, if somebody would like to make a motion.
Motion to go out of order.
To suspend council rules and take a agenda item out of order. Motion by Counsel DiMarco, second by Vice President Belcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will revert in a minute back to regular scheduled meeting. We will go now to the fire station vote out of old business. We have had, we have done our homework on this, you know, a vote came before the town in November of twenty-three, and it was defeated pretty handily. And, you know, we take responsibility for that. I take responsibility for that. We came in, there was a substantial cost to acquire property of six million dollars, and the location obviously was not favorable. We took both those items to heart and looked for alternative locations, looked for public land, and looked for more reasonable prices. As we've discussed, every six months we go, prices go up about a half a million dollars. However, we came up with two locations. We have the numbers, we've had the numbers, we've shared the numbers with the counselors, we've shared renderings with the counselors. Town manager and I spoke with Kessel and Booth, our architect, as, as soon as, earlier this afternoon, to reiterate the numbers, to make sure we're on track, to see what their timeline would be in terms of getting us more in-depth renderings and such. So we have two options before us. We have an option which involves the old middle school, which would be on the old middle school height, site, more towards where the actual old middle school is, close to Waldemar Street, and that location would be forty million dollars. We have also come up with a location down on Walden Street where the existing basketball court would be. As part of this, the basketball courts would be moved across the street to Ingleside Park where the current baseball field is. This would include an underground storage container for water, for drainage off the hill, to also help alleviate with some of the flooding on Walden. This project would come in at thirty-five million dollars, roughly four and a half million dollars, a little closer to five million dollars less. The majority of those costs are an infrastructure cost that would have to be done at the middle school. Those are the two options we have. I'll open it up for, first of all, I will open it up for a motion on a specific location. That location can be discussed, it can be altered, it could be amended. Motion by Vice President Belcher to...
To move forward the Walden Street location.
Second. Motion by Vice President Belcher to move forward with the Walden Street, which is the basketball court location. There's a second on that motion by Counsel DiMarco. Discussion on that motion. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. I'm happy to continue to support Winter Fire. I've had the benefit, I guess, of having them respond to me for medical issues, my family. And when I was on the Firehouse Building Committee during the last vote, it was abundantly clear that the station is needed. It cannot wait. Inaction is no longer an option for the town. I think the result of the vote was financially motivated, and I think that's an important thing to consider going forward. The Walden Street station is a little more affordable, so I think that that has the best chance, and I want to make sure we give you the best chance of getting what you need.
And before we get into more discussion, just for a, you know, just to think that thirty-five million to forty million, you're getting the exact same firehouse. It's on the same footprint, same firehouse, same amenities, which we will go into much more in-depth as we, as the process goes on, but it's, you're basically, the council's basically voting on just the location is what's different. The building would be exactly the same. The only difference I should point out would be, at the middle school site, the facility would have the, would have the opportunity to have pass-through, so you could go in one way, out the other way, and you could come in one way and out the other way. Where the basketball court site would be the same as we've had, apparatus would be backing in and going out frontwards. Other than that, the facilities themselves, the footprint, the square footage is, is pretty much identical. Continued conversation. Counsel Tassanari.
I will, I'll vote in favor for the, for the Walden Street location. My chief concern is getting the firefighters, the personnel, their, their own decontamination units and room to shower within one hour, and the... And the decontamination units for the, for the, their equipment in separate living quarters from their apparatus as fast as possible. I don't know what the voters are going to say and what they're going to do about $36 million debt override or debt exclusion. But my eyes is on getting the Winthrop Fire Department, the firefighters, here in town, the stuff that they need to live a long, healthy life after they make it to retirement. I don't know if we're going to do that with Walden Street or with the new building or if we'll need to go back to the drawing board. But we'll keep it, no matter what happens, at a fast-forward pace. Not going to, not going to promise you guys a new building because I don't know what everyone's going to vote for when it comes to the ballot. But we'll keep it moving as fast as possible to get you what you need.
Counselor Costigan.
Yeah, from day one, my first, my first meeting here in the council, we entertain the idea, I entertain the idea of the Walden Street location as being best out of the eight that were proposed. So I've been behind the Walden Street project ever since I've been on the council. My belief is that the Pauline Street location is and should be used for future use for the community. So that is where I stand there. I've always stood by that as well. With regards to this vote and the need for a dead exclusion for the fire department, all day long, let's put it out to the people. If they do reject it, again, let's see what the appetite is. We'll go back to the drawing board till hell freezes over to get you guys a firehouse. There's no question about it. If we have to go to Plan B, as Mr. DiMarco mentioned last council meeting, we'll do that, but we will get this over the goalpost either way. So again, that's my commitment to you. I am for the Walden Street 100%.
Counselor Aiello. Just a question on how to vote. If we prefer the other location, the middle school site, should we vote no on this? And then if it doesn't have a major, if Walden doesn't have a majority, we would vote again on the middle school? Is that how it would work? We have two choices. Yes, you have two choices. You could amend this part, this motion, or you could vote no on this motion. And then if it did not pass, you could make a subsequent motion. Why don't I amend the motion to ask each counselor what they would, just have them vote. And if we get five votes for one of them, that one wins. Is that all right? Not sure what you're asking for. Are you asking for... We've got a, we've got a... We're going to be, we have a couple more counselors I'm sure that would like to make comment and then we will be voting on this motion. If that motion... But the motion is for Walden Street. The motion is for Walden Street, yes. You have the opportunity to amend this motion, which would require a second and then discussion. Then we would vote on the amendment. And if not, we would revert back to the original motion, which is the Walden Street. Okay, so you want to hear from everybody first before a motion to amend? I would like to because I think if you hear from everybody and they tell you where they're voting, I think you know where you stand. Sure. Counselor Swope.
I mentioned this to President Littary. I just want to make sure that in the Walden Street location, that it's, that it's safe for the kids because on one hand, you have the park across the street and you have the school behind you. So just as long as we can plan this so that when we have an emergency, when the fire trucks are coming out, that we have a safe plan for the kids. But then, if we've got that, then...
And just to respond to that, like I have, I mean, we have our main fire station that's been across the street from the school for probably 100 years. And the other proposed site is above the park as well. And this, this decision, when we came up with these locations, obviously had input from the chief, fire chief, right, and staff. I'm not a firefighter. I don't pretend to know every intricacy of it. But we did not move forward with any locations, any discussions, without obviously having conversations with people a lot more expert than we are and ask similar questions. But I do look, you know, I look across the street from the Pauline Street station and see the roundabout where there's a drop-off and pickup of current students now. Firefighters are always going to do what they have to do and their, I mean, their first concern is always the safety of our public. And I'm sure that the fire chief would not have given a green light to either location if they didn't think it was feasible in that term. But I incredibly respect your thought process and your concern for the children of our community. Anything else, Counselor Swope, on that?
No.
Okay. Counselor DeRoz, did you have?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, Council President. I neglected to say earlier that the conditions that you described precisely and graphically, thank you for doing that. I thanked Chief Wiley actually when, months ago, when we were showing the videos of the firehouse. I think it really helps everybody to understand just how urgent the need is. With that said, to me, in the past week, including today, actually, I had constituents call me about this and one preferred one option and had a good argument. The other one preferred the other option and had a good argument. For me, watching the finances of the town, a $5.3 million difference to me is significant. So if both of these locations would achieve what we're looking to achieve with the new firehouse, I would be in support of Walden Street.
And before I go to Counselor DiMarco, I would say too, because one concern a lot of people have, and we've asked the citizens for their input and many of them said the middle school site. And a lot of them that I spoke to said the middle school site because they're just sick and tired of seeing the middle school. Not necessarily because they thought it was a better location, it was higher, it was lower, it was more feasible, whatever. It was that people in this town, including I'm sure most if not all the council, are just sick and tired of driving by that middle school and seeing it there for eight years now. I live right across the street from it, I understand the concerns. I do see movement on that location and I do expect to see some action brought before this council and within the first quarter of next year on that middle school site, if the basketball site is, if the Walden Street site is picked. So we hear you on the middle school, believe me, it can't be said any louder. I do believe, and it's been said and it's been stated here, that the majority of people in this town will support a fire station. They're very concerned about cost, which everybody is, and they're very concerned about location. But please don't be blinded by just looking at the middle school. Please have, continue to have some patience in this council to have some action on that in the very near future. Counselor DiMarco had something?
Yeah, no, I also favor the Walden Street site. There is, and I would vote for either site that the council put up. But I do prefer the building on the Walden Street site because it does save us a significant amount of money. What I do have a problem with, and it's a fight for another day, is the moving of the basketball courts to Ingleside Park. If anything, I want more grass, I want more parkland. I don't want to take away anything from Ingleside Park. So that's a fight for another day, but I prefer the Walden Street site and I will vote for it.
Counselor Munson.
Thank you. I mean, I've been rooting for a new fire station since I've been on board and I was upset that we lost but the last time. And we kind of are on a negative trajectory where we lost the override, we lost the last fire station. So my only hesitation was to make sure that what we did put forth on the ballot was going to succeed. And I'm still leery that the old middle school has caught this allure of people are going, we're going to lose votes. That survey of where it was 55-45 shows that people still want it at the old middle school. Enough to lose votes on this upcoming ballot question to put the fire station on Walden. So it is my objective, and I hope that everyone can be on board with this, is to move the conversation on the old middle school faster, further. And it just needs to be a consensus that we go ahead and pick a decision as far as what goes up there, most likely residential, get an RFP out. I know Tony would be really happy to get it out there and get some developments and some creative developers to give us some good ideas and get that off the table so that we can go ahead, comfortably move forward with the Walden Street. I don't know, at this exact same location, I asked for a roll call a while back on everyone's opinion on what the best location for the fire station was. I think it was unanimous that Walden Street was the best choice based on the two that we have right now. So I think without further ado, we should go ahead and vote on it and go ahead and make it forward, knowing that we're going to move the conversation forward with the old middle school and get that off the table. We need to go ahead and look at this as a big picture. We get the old middle school resolved, we get the fire station resolved, we get the override resolved. And the flooding needs to be resolved. Those are the big four that are the biggest concerns of this town. And we can do it all, we just need to get a vision and get the people behind it and so we can all be on the same page, not fighting. Thank you.
Is a motion to move the question any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. The motion again is to put a fire station on the ballot for the Walden Street location.
Counselor Tassanari?
Yes.
Counselor Costigan?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Marco?
Yes.
Counselor Aiello?
Yes.
Counselor Swope?
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Littary?
Yes. Motion's passed. And I will say, this is, this is the first step, right? The cost projection for this is $35,678. We will have cost estimates per taxpayer, we will have more complete drawings. We do have, and we'll make sure it's on the website if it is not now, renderings that we currently have. Again, we can't do any of this without firefighters. So again, thank you so much for taking time out of your day to be here. You make a difference. People make a difference and we thank you again for all you do. So thank you and we will move on now. Public comment, we have none. Let's open it up for public comment. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
For the firefighters, please. First of all, I want to say, I've written several letters, re-edited, both emails, books, reading the fire. We've had you guys are the most effective advocates. People didn't believe necessarily last time, the town manager, council president, council. You guys, we believe quite frankly, you guys live it every day. We want to have a fire station, I vote for the fire station. But you guys need to take an example from the teachers from the Walden Square, the schools. You guys spend the time on it, try to make sure this is a very effective initiative. We will need it daily. And I think it's important for us to send a strong message that the people in this town support you and we want a big vote, not a narrow vote. So please, the algorithm's hard to vote because everybody respects you. But they want you here to be correct, to see the pictures of what we live, living with. It's not everybody should go down to the station to see that. Please do that because you are the best advocate. Why don't you wear your tux? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Karen, please.
Chair of the House, Precinct 2. Nobody at that table has to know how I feel about this. My disappointment in my last meeting, I can't even express to you how I felt. I went home that night and I called you, I was just so upset, each and everyone. What the captain said tonight is more than I can ever say about the conditions of those fire stations. Please, and thank you, all of you, for please voting to go forward with this.
Thank you, Karen. Cassie.
Hello. Hello, that's more like it. Cassie Woodhouse, Precinct 6. I wrote some things down. There are a number of large decisions this town council needs to make for our community. Flood mitigation and environmental resiliency, school override, fire station, and general future planning for community maintenance. These are not issues that appeared overnight. Many have been pushed down the road until they could not be any further without dramatic impacts to our community. If we do not pass the override for our schools, teachers, student experiences, class sizes, and school programs will be substantially changed. Once things are taken away, it takes a long time to get them back. I've heard from folks that there was a marching band in Winthrop once that when a previous override didn't pass, more than 15 years ago, that program was eliminated. There aren't many things left to eliminate. Our kids deserve to be exploring many programs and finding their strengths and interests in our schools. How can they do that when we are taking away AP classes, music, options for languages? This override is necessary to stabilize the programs we currently have. We need to be building a future for our community in everything we do. Please vote to put the $4.95 million back out for a special election, our community needs it. We also need to have open and clear conversations about the fire station to build support and trust in the process. Clarity on who performs the estimates and pricing is important so that we know we can believe them. Creating opportunities to share information with community members, like you just discussed, is really important. You also need to be clear about the goals of holding polls to ask for community input, especially if the responses will just be ignored when they disagree with the members of the council's opinions. There needs to be transparency in the process, sharing the entire design process and community engagement built into the design process when this needed new station hopefully moves forward. There are many neighborhoods impacted by flooding that will require costly engineering and construction to ensure those homes do not continue to experience flooding every time there's a dramatic storm or high tide. This is also an immediate need for our community. There are many neighborhoods that don't flood, but without a substantial amount of grant funding, members of our community, regardless of where they live, will pay for that flood mitigation, regardless of where their homes are located. The counselors who voted against 3A are making this issue harder to address by limiting our access to state funding for grant programs. I've heard folks say we've done enough for our schools or firefighters need our support first, but making that connection between complying with the MBTA zoning law and our ability to address flooding isn't right. The fact of the matter is that no single need in our community exists in a vacuum. All of these issues need to be addressed. All of them will cost money and we as community members need to invest in all of them in order for our community to thrive. Pitting parts of our community against one another just serves to distract from the common goal of ensuring our community has a functional future. There are services our community provides that I do not use personally. I still want them to be available for people when they need them. People saying that we don't, they don't have kids or their kids went to private school, so why pay for the public schools are missing the point. We're participating in a society. It's a collective social agreement. Part of that is funding things in the community for the general public benefit, even if you don't personally use them. I'm not a senior citizen, but I want the senior citizens in our community to have services they need provided by our town. I want our fire service to be available for everyone. These services can't be paid individually only when you personally need them. We need to plan for the future of our community. We cannot pick and choose which long-deferred community needs we want to address. We need to address all of them.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Hi, everyone, I'm Kay O'Dwyer, I'm from Precinct 3. I just want to thank the Winthrop Fire Department for being here. I had actually come here tonight to speak about the override, but I think I just want to talk about Winthrop in general. I know a lot of dads back here and a lot of their kids go to Winthrop Public Schools. I know that the school committee is going to make a recommendation about the override. I think that the way that the question was on the ballot was really bad. The geography sucked, it was on the third page, it was worded poorly. A lot of people that did early voting, I'm not going to extrapolate on all of this, we lost. But we're here because we want to win. And I agree with the school committee's recommendation that we should put the $4.95 million among whatever else the school committee decides is the right thing to do. And I want to support our superintendent, Lisa Howard, who's a miracle worker. And I know she supports the Winthrop Fire Department too. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Hi, a few comments. Julia Waller, Precinct 2. Really glad that you guys made a decision about the firehouse, first thing. Just want to comment on two issues tonight, the first one being the override, a lot of us are here tonight. November's loss was devastating and for many of us, it came as a shock. So I just want to make a few points to support the, putting this on the ballot for the full $4.9 million, as requested by the superintendent, sorry, $4.95 million. And to please vote to keep this a special election in February 25, just that on the ballot, not complicating things. As Kay said, it was really hard last time at the end of a long ballot, it was confusing. Let's make it clear, one issue, let's get this done. And there's one thing I just want to emphasize about this. There's really no perfect time to raise taxes. And President Littary made a comment last, no, Monday night at the school committee that I just want to elevate, that I think people don't necessarily think about when they think about this override, that he said, "We may need to rob from Peter to pay Paul." And that really resonated with me because it isn't just about our schools. This is about all the departments, all of the residents. This is the biggest budget expenditure and we can't just cut $3.5 million from it and expect it not to have reverberating in effect. expect it not to have reverberating in effect. So I hope that that's made clear in this next attempt. This is about not just the schools, the entire town. So I'm hopeful for that. The second thing, I want to lend my support to what I see on the agenda for the formation of an affordable housing committee, advisory committee. That's excellent, I'm very excited to see that. One of the few positives from this almost year-long, ongoing debate about the 3A zoning law is that it's put housing into the limelight, and that's warranted, in particularly affordable housing. And I'm glad that. As a region, we need more housing, all housing, all types, all income levels, we need housing. We don't need it all in Winthrop, but we know that we have an affordability housing problem in Winthrop. I think we can all agree on that. We know from the last Greater Boston Housing Report card that over half of Winthrop residents pay more than 2/3 of their income on rent. So over half of people that live in Winthrop today can't technically afford their housing today. And currently, we don't have anything on the books to really grapple with that. So I'm very hopeful that having a committee designated just to focus on that issue can do things like what we explored when I was on the planning board, doing an inclusionary zoning ordinance, so that a certain amount of every housing that's built has to be set aside below market. Of course, that requires a subsidy, so there's things we can do, like setting up an affordable housing trust fund, to actually invest, to create that revenue. Affordable housing doesn't just happen out of nowhere, right? It takes some subsidy, but first, it takes a commitment from the town, and having the committee set up to do just that, I'm very hopeful can start to address the issue with both creating affordable housing and preserving that which we currently have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Count.
Steve Colander, Precinct 3. On behalf of my fellow brothers and one sister, thank you very much. It goes a long way, that means a lot to us. Secondly, I want to comment on Councilor Tassinieri and the fire stations that were rehabbed. NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, and OSHA. We're bound to both those organizations. There are square footage that is required for fire stations. We don't have either one on our current footprints, we can't do it. I've been in six of those stations, they have the square footage, okay? We're not Lexington, we're not Boston, we're not Chelsea, we're not Arlington, we're Winthrop.
Todd Sacco.
Todd Sacco, Precinct 2. Just a friendly reminder that, again, we voted for Trump, we didn't vote for Lydia, we voted against Pocahontas.
No name falling.
You win. So, I'm not sure what's going on with the wanting to have the school committee question on its own ballot. I was disappointed to hear that at the school committee last night. I was excited to hear Jim say, "We need to be one force together to try to get these, both of these things passed." And by the way, I'm going to be transparent, I'm a no on the school vote. However, I do think there are ways to win, and coming out at 4.95 or even 3.5 is probably not going to do it when the fire station's going to be on that same ballot. I hope you don't split that ballot and disenfranchise voters to have to come out twice. And having a vote in February, we're trying to disenfranchise, what are we, sneaky here? We want to disenfranchise voters, we want the lowest vote count? Don't split it, don't play games, and be truthful with why you're asking for this money. Okay? Especially for the schools. Be truthful.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Do I have to give the money?
You don't have to, just speak up, please, and name and place.
I'm Ken Woodward, Precinct 2. I don't have confidence in the town voting in the affirmative for both of these on the same ballot. I think you guys, in your wisdom, you can decide who goes first. You can decide if it's the firehouse, the firehouse, it's the schools, it's the schools. I get a bad vibe from the lack of community outreach that happens when these issues are pushed forward. You guys throw all this stuff out there, and then kind of make this shocked face when everybody kicks it back, and we get out there, we talk to people, no one has any information. You can't just assume that everybody's going to get it from their Facebook forums or from their friends, which it seems like that's where the only conversation with information is. There's a lot of misinformation. Whichever way you vote, especially if, for some reason, you put these both, I think it's going to potentially sink both, if you put them on the same ballot, you have to get out there and talk, like knocking on doors, patting hands, you know? You can't just be said, "Oh, if you don't get the money, we'll find it somewhere else." You've got to pretend like lives depend on it, because they do, they literally do, right? And it's like no one recalls how bad the pushback was on the community. It's like, the Kirby thing got pushed out, I voted for it. I had a long sign up for it, like nobody else wanted to put a long sign up for it, they were so afraid of their neighbors' judgment, because for some insane reason, that site was so hated. I can't explain why. It's just like the nuances and the quirks of the people in this town. It's like, have we delved into that? Do we know what's going on with them, like psychologically, when it comes to these firehouses? It was like, it was like made, like getting out there, trying to convince people that like the Kirby would be, it was good, it was a good plan, it was a good decent plan. And it's still like, I just feel like we're constantly tripping over you-know-whats with this stuff. It just gets thrown out there, and there's no information, there's no community engagement, and pushed off to, you know, it's pushed off to the community groups, and it's pushed off to the firefighters to, you know, they're going to have to go out there and sort of talk up their own thing. It shouldn't be that way. Whatever we do, we need to be prepared. And I think that if both of these things go on the same ballot, it's going to split people into groups, and I think it's going to go badly. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. Marcy.
Hi. Marcy Hamilton, Precinct 2. I've been thinking a lot about how we get our information out. A lot of us come to the meetings, a lot of us come to the precinct counselor meetings that you had, and I'm thinking, as I was driving into Winthrop, I see the signs, "No parking or you will get tagged on trash days," right? Why don't we use those signs to inform people that there's an important vote coming up for this fire station? Your vote will save your lives. And just put it out there on each entrance, because we have a lot of people, new people, new residents moving into these apartments, into these townhouses, into these structures that we're building. And you can knock on doors, which I think you should, but a lot of people don't get their information. So let's use the information, these satellite things that we have, to get that information out before we have this vote. They're both two important votes. I'm still waiting on reports about the drainage work that's going to be coming, and I really would like to see more information layered out, not just on precinct managers, where you get the same people show up at the same times to different meetings. But let's use our informational outlets the way we should. No one watches CAT, some people read the transcript, you know, we will call our counselors. Let's blast these informations out before the vote, way before the vote, that this is coming. Our firefighters deserve a firehouse, for goodness sake, they do. Our schools deserve to have them fully staffed and fully funded, and our streets need to be dry. Thank you.
Thank you. Cool. Yeah. Yes.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. My name's Carissa Youngst, and I'm pretty sure I'm Precinct 5, I live on Putnam Street, but I panic a little every election and forget where I'm supposed to be voting. I am a mother, I am an educator for 20 years. I've worked in private schools, public schools, early education, after-school, summer camp. I currently work in Boston, because I can't afford to work in Winthrop and live in Winthrop at the same time. And that is one of the reasons I'm here to support putting this education, putting the override on the ballot once again. I think a lot of voters were overwhelmed at the presidential election. There were many, many things that many of us were, to be quite frank, really stressed out about, and I just think that when you ask people for more money at the same time that we're doing all these other things, it's really hard. I don't envy any of you this position, I know it's a hard thing to sell, but anybody who thinks letting our schools go doesn't impact them is not thinking about what schools do for society. If we let our schools go, if we don't fund our schools well enough, and the class sizes increase and the programs decrease, our dropout rates are going to increase, substance abuse is going to increase, crime is going to increase. The problems that face a community will increase if the school system is not helping to produce citizens that will grow up and take care of this community. I agree with a lot of what has been said already, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but I think once we lose something, it is so much harder to get it back. And we've seen a lot of young families coming into Winthrop, bringing new life, bringing some excitement, and I think a lot of people might have feelings about how the town might be changing, but the fact is, you won't get new residents if our school system isn't attractive to people, and if our community is not attractive to people. So I think it does impact everyone, whether or not you have children, and I strongly support the putting this on the ballot once again.
Thank you. Catherine.
Hi. Kathleen Cappuccio, 49, Waldemar Ave. I was late, but I was watching a little bit on WCAT. And I'm thrilled that the council voted to put the fire station on the ballot. But some of the rhetoric that I hear regarding, you know, information that's been put forth about the fire station, whether it was on, you know, the last ballot, we've been in need of a fire station for decades. None of this is new. The information has been put forth, and again, I know that you, you know, voted to put it forth on the ballot, which is great, but I think the town and some of the counselors need to become more educated in what has actually happened and occurred. Our firefighters have been working in conditions that are not OSHA compliant, and this has been discussed for years. We've talked about, you know, the plans and the money, it's been very well put forth. As much as I love having our firefighters here, which I think is great, do they actually need to be here on their limited time off to fight for themselves? I'm not sure if they do, to be quite honest. I'm grateful they're here, but this isn't new. Our current stations, as Karen Chavez talks about often, were built for horse and carriage. Our men, and I think one woman, one woman, sorry, or maybe two, are working in conditions that are just substandard. We wouldn't do this. So again, I'm thrilled that the council is putting this forth, and I hope there's a huge effort by this council, and even beyond the council, by our community. Let's stand behind our men and women at this vote that are running in when we are running out. Who deserves more than these men and women? Please, and again, this is just, you know, for us at large, let's stand behind our heroes, not just with a Facebook post, or, "Oh, we love our firefighters." Let's get behind this. They deserve so more than what they've got from us. They have had open houses for our community, videos have been put forth. So please, stand behind our men and women. We're running out and they're running in. These men have come to my parents' house when my dad was in a medical emergency, and with such grace and humility and courage. Stand behind them, please.
Thank you, Catherine.
Hi. Landon Laporte, Precinct 3? Are we? Yeah, that's okay. I just want to second what Carissa is saying here, I think it should be, the school override should be its own question on its own ballot. We are excited to be residents of Winthrop. We've got two young girls, one in daycare with Max over here, preschool, sorry, but after the election, we had the serious conversation of if we're going to stay. It's a serious conversation, it's one I did not imagine I would have to have. So we, my point here is just making a good attempt at this, at getting these things through, which we're all talking about, but I just want to second what we're going with here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Ken Woodward, Precinct 3. Denise, I sent you a letter before, I had a work conflict that I was able to resolve so I could be here tonight. To Kay's point, there's a lot of women who have worked hard on the override, there's also a lot of fathers and husbands standing behind them as well, while they were out there on the front lines trying to raise awareness. I do agree wholeheartedly with the new fire department, some of my friends and neighbors are behind me in support of that as well. I'm a father of two as well, I think I said Precinct 3 already. I coach three sports in town for our youth, so I'm coaching over 40, 50 kids throughout the year, flag football, baseball, soccer, with other friends and neighbors behind me. It's, this is like an awesome section and an awesome turnout to see everybody here tonight. So I wholeheartedly agree, I've also worked as a poll worker, election official, since the primary election in 2020. Based on that, I just want to jot down, again, I'm pivoting a little bit from my original letter, but there were a couple of points I wanted to make, that there was just a number of concerns from voters about ballot confusion. Many struggle to understand the language and context of the key questions. This lack of clarity likely contributed to the override's failure. When placed in a crowded federal ballot, our community cannot risk this happening again. This override does not pass, if this override does not pass, it's not necessarily about the good we can do, to your point earlier, it's about the negative consequences that will affect. So $3.5 million in cuts will directly impact our schools. Larger class sizes, staff reductions, and increased fees for athletics will strain families and hinder student success. What I'm really concerned about, to Landon's point here, is over time, these cuts are going to erode the quality of education, leading families to seek alternatives, such as private or charter schools, or worst-case scenario, we have to leave town to find better alternatives. There's a number of other consequences that could come into play, but I'll wrap it up and just say that a standalone election will allow voters to focus on this essential issue without distraction and more confusion as it was on the federal election. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Jack Dowd, Precinct 1. I'm concerned about all the money that we're not getting from Mass Water Resource and Mass Port. I understand negotiations are going on. I'm thinking that we're in competition to get this money from these two entities. We need real competitors in the room when we negotiate. I was at a couple of meetings with FAA and Mass Port concerning 1432 years ago, and Mass Port's going to bring about a dozen lawyers to the meeting. I know it's a competition. If we get money, somebody else doesn't get money. That's what I think. So we need real competitors in this negotiation process. At the very first meeting, Max Tassinieri is chairman of this strategic committee, I suggested that Winthrop put out a request for interest in representing the town of Winthrop with these two entities, Mass Water Resource and Mass Port. I'm only going to discuss Mass Port. I'm wondering, and it's because we need money for the schools, Mass Port has our money for the schools. When you boil it down, they have our money for the schools. I'm wondering if someone from the school is going to be present at these negotiations or at these meetings. I'm talking about a person right over to my right here, one of the best competitors in the town of Winthrop has ever seen. Is she going to be involved in trying to get money for the schools from Mass Port? I hope you consider my request to put her on this project, because she's very good at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Cubic. I'm here representing my family, my wife Shannon, and our three young boys who are in preschool, kindergarten, and second grade.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Cubic. I'm here representing my family, my wife Shannon, and our three young boys who are in preschool, kindergarten, and second grade. It's interesting hearing some of the facts that we've heard tonight, and I applaud the chief and having all the firemen come out to give their testimony. I'd hate to bring my sons and all of the children who live here in Winthrop because they are your constituents as well. We can bring them here, we can flood them in, and you can hear their stories, and you probably have children who've been through public schools here. They need a voice, and you're here to represent them. As a military officer, I've benefited from the top education, training, and experience. And a lot of that, you know, we remember certain instances across our lives, tragedies that have happened, and we look back at those and say, oh, we made a mistake because we didn't invest. We didn't invest in our future, and we didn't invest in the people that matter. And I'll tell you, all of the people in this room matter, our fire department, our kids, and all the people around us, the businesses that are here. How are we going to invest in our future as a town, as a community? And you, as our leaders, I challenge every one of you to stand up, take accountability for what you are able to do, and make a difference. If you aren't doing that every single meeting for every one of us, you are failing us. And so I challenge you here tonight, let's go and figure out a way to put these on separate ballots, get them both passed, and do it to the maximum extent, and show how we never have to tell a story about the Winthrop Fire Department running through piss and shit, and have our kids have the right ability to grow up in a education that will set them up for success to become the next teacher, the next firefighter, or God bless them if they serve our country. So I challenge you all tonight and every night when you come together to make a difference. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, moving on. Correspondence. Before I go to Denise, I know we did get a letter from Cassie Woodhouse, which I would like to discuss a little bit. It was a relatively lengthy letter, and it had a page and a half of citizen signatures, and it was requesting that the town council request or put a motion together for reconsideration on their 3A vote. I just want to put that in the record, that we received that from Cassie, and just explain how that, if that process was to occur, to have a motion to reconsider any item, there would have to be a motion from a councillor on the prevailing side. So in this case, a councillor who voted no would make a motion to reconsider. It would be seconded, it would be discussed, and it would be voted on. So that is an option that the council has. It could be done at New Business here, or it could be put on a subsequent town council meeting, but I did want to recognize the letter, thank Cassie for putting it together and to gather all the signatures she could, and just inform the public what the process would be. Denise, any further correspondence?
In all these names, because I received so many of them, will be put in the record in the minutes. But I did receive several correspondence about the disappointment in the TC vote, the last meeting for not backing the fire station. I did receive over 35 school support overrides for the 4.95 that they would like that to be put back in the ballot. Let's see. I did receive one from Paul Baskin, refers to parking article in Somerville. He requested the town councils to take a look at. And that is it. And again, all these names will be put in the record.
Thank you. Committee reports. I do not believe we have any. School department report. We had a school committee meeting last night. It will be discussed in the old business, new business? It will be discussed in new business, so I won't go over it. It's obviously all circles around the override, and I will discuss that in new business. Town manager's report has been circulated. Are there questions for the town manager? Councilor Yello.
Tony, just real quick, one of the things that I thought we're going to see at this meeting, like, I could be wrong, and I also understand we've had a whole bunch of other intervening things, was to have a comprehensive list related to the three areas that are flooding our design services, whether they're berms, or studies at Fishman's Bend, or seawalls, or sewage overflow, stormwater system overflow, and pumping stations, et cetera, to try to figure out all of the budgetary needs to bring those to final design. I don't see that today on the agenda on your notes. Is that going to be something that we can look at in early January?
You have a plan on discussing that at the next meeting. I'll have Director Callahan, and we'll have an update on the work done so far and what the next steps will be.
Okay, that's great. That's important from a budgeting perspective. Want to see if we can stop pushing that stuff a little bit more aggressively, a lot more aggressively. Thank you.
Councilman.
A little calm for a second. Thank you, Tony, for everything you do, and I did want to just ask a similar question about that engineering and design work. I'm glad that Steve will be presenting some information next time, but I do think if we're going to be spending money, discretionary money, that this would be our top priority. But I was just wondering if there was any update currently about state money for the house, if state money for demolition of the old middle school at the, is there earmark money there? And what are the, and if you could just speak to what the caveats are to that?
We discussed it at the last meeting. Obviously, it's in the housing bond bill, so it's tied to a housing project for one, and then we'll also need, you know, release from the governor to, if you brought, you know, made a request to bring that forward. But again, we need a housing project to tie it to that specific.
So in other words, we would need an RFP?
Right, with the other half is tied to something else, though. But we still, it's part of a bond bill, regardless.
So we would need an actual proposal from a developer to be able to present to them, or would we just need to be able to say, we as a council have committed that this is going to be residential, and we're looking for the money?
No, you would need a project behind it.
You would need a project that we've approved?
Formulate a project, or instruct me to do one, and then bring something forward, vote on it, and then, you know, you could ask, go ahead and ask for the money. No guarantee you're going to get it, but that would be something you'd have to bring forward.
So if I were to suggest that we, or if I were to make a motion to get an RFP out there for developers to come back with residential, wouldn't that need, wouldn't that be something that we would need to vote on as a council prior to the motion, or?
Yeah, we defer to the council president as far as making the motion, but.
Before I go back to Jim, if you don't mind, can you also just give me an update on if the planning board voted on the short-term lodging and where that's at, and if we have any plans on putting that on the agenda?
I don't believe the planning board's voted on it yet. Their next meeting is this week, I believe, Wednesday, the 18th, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Jim, is that something that you can answer?
Well, we, Tony and I have looked, I mean, like Tony said, we've discussed this at the last couple of meetings, and my desire to look at demolition of that middle school and auditorium, not the gymnasium, we've talked about a couple of companies this week that we were looking to reach out to get more information. We also looked at State House for State House notes to see if we wanted to do it ourselves and the cost of that. We talked at previous meetings about the thought of looking into increasing the green space there and selling off potential, but that's a council vote, to look at potential five lots for five townhouses, which would be 10 pieces of property, and then to increase green space use, and then keep the gym. So it's still all council votes, and we will have it on the agenda, but I mean, I think, you know, we said it earlier this evening, there has been one developer over the past many years, and it never went anywhere, that one, that was interested in the location and to redevelop it as is into apartments. I don't know what the thought process is on a substantial amount of units in that area. You know, it needs to be an in-depth discussion, which we've talked about, and we've had multiple options here, and you still need a project.
Doesn't it sound like, it sounds like to get the conversation moving, do we need a consultant to be able to kind of get a community engagement and the council to kind of?
We need a council decision on a direction to go.
So what's stopping us from just saying, we've already got a survey done, what's stopping us from just saying, let's get an RFP out and see what people are coming back with, with ideas for residential at the top of the hill?
Well, if residential is what the majority of the council would want, nothing would stop that.
There's nothing to stop us from actually taking a proposal that's been received and not doing anything with it. You know, we don't, aren't obligated to do anything.
Mr. President. Councilor Yello.
Permission. I think, I think Councilman Munson's desire to sort of try to jumpstart this is admirable, but really, as the town council president said, Councilman Munson, we really need to adopt a formal plan. We need to dimensionalize things, like how deep is the residential element going to be, where the utilities feed, what's going to happen on the other parts of the project, what kind of green space are we providing, what kind of community assets are we providing? There's been a couple of talks down at the bottom about doing public employee, like for teachers, firemen, police officers, affordable housing for them, so they could live and work in town. There has been ideas in the past, again, about maybe a boutique hotel as well. Don't know what the market is for that at this point, but, you know, you never know. So we need a, we need a robust discussion about what can happen there. Think about a loose master plan, but with some real dimensions on it. Try to make sure we understand what we have and don't have. I believe we've got a lot of detail about the history of the ownership of the property, so we understand sort of what's possible without legislative needs, action, because some of that had been possibly deemed to be popular in the past. I think there's some survey information out. We ought to get that and document what that survey information is and see what's missing. And then, once we have a formal plan for the entirety of the site, we can then decide on sequencing and releasing of RFPs. It's likely to be a multiple RFP environment here, so I think what the, what the town council is suggesting is, really do need a workshop on it to understand it, and then try to drive ourselves to a consensus master plan for that site, before you hit, before you then issue an RFP.
Still, I would.
But that can happen fast.
I would love to see that happen. I'm just looking for the action item, not the conversation, but the action item. So do we need to make a motion to appropriate funds for a consultant to facilitate that?
No. I think what we will do right now is we will have, and we've gotten, gotten legal advice before that we have the opportunity to have roundtable discussions as a council, open to the public. No discussion, just a special sort of meeting where it would just be a roundtable discussion on multiple ideas. Councilor Yello brought up a few, and there have been thoughts about what can be done there, and it's just trying to get a majority of people to agree with the thoughts. And you do, you just can't throw out one thing and forget about the rest of the property. There has to be some sort of plan. But I think I, hey, I'm happy to have meetings anytime. I'd be happy to set up a special meeting for the council and have a roundtable discussion on the middle school project itself. Talk about the whole site, see what we want to do. I mean, to me, I mean, obviously, to me, it seems to be relatively clear that, you know, no project would start without a rink and a gymnasium. We've been incredibly fortunate to build three new schools. Unfortunately, we've gone from four gyms to three. There's a huge demand for gymnasium space. There's also a demand from Parks and Rec, which provides an incredible service to our town, both young and old. So I think that would be a great, again, I don't want to say a start, because we've had some of these discussions before, but to have a roundtable with participation from the public to be able to sit there and listen to what we're saying, but just a special meeting in regards to that, I'd be more than happy to set one up right at the new year.
I'll second that motion, or make the motion.
It will be coming. It will be coming.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions for town manager? Councilor Costigan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Town manager, just a, just a quick question on the new state ADU zoning law, as it relates to, I know Cipolletta is drafting some type of, you know, law as it pertains to the town, the zoning anyways. As far as vehicles and ADUs, is there any restriction under that proposed new state law?
That'll be addressed when town attorney Cipolletta brings the memo forward. There is restrictions you can put on board there. But I don't want to get into all the weeds right now, but he'll give you an update on that. He had a seminar today, and he's drafting a memo that will present to the council. That'll answer that question as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Swob.
Just a shout out to Scott Mahoney Wright, who gave me a clue about climate resilience workshop that I listened to for three hours. It was great. And the nice thing about that is they, we talked about gray solutions versus tunnels for, gray solutions, which are tunnels, to save water versus green solutions, which we definitely need, and it was, it was just a wonderful conference. Anybody else that can give me any ideas about things like that that may, I may not have seen, I most appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the town manager, and we got his report. Councilor Doss.
Thank you, Council President. Tony, just kudos for putting right at the beginning of your town manager report. I'm not sure at this point how many folks are reading electronic version, because it's fairly new, but just, just so people don't miss it, because it's tied to the conversation we just had earlier tonight. The first paragraph in your report says, "We sent out the department head budget memo for fiscal year '26 with a due date of the first week of January '25. We are planning on a normal budget cycle with nominal cost of living increases in line with past budgets. However, we have informed the department heads that if the schools do not receive additional funding via an override, then additional cuts will be required from the town side of the budget, and to be prepared to make those cuts and highlight subsequent levels of service drop off from the reduced funding." So, no questions. I just want to say thank you for including that, and wanted to put it in the record to make sure everybody is hearing that, that as we look ahead to the budget season, which gets into high gear late March, early April, this is imminent impact for us. So thank you for putting that in there.
Thank you, Council Doss. Council Tesonary?
Thank you, Council President. We have an update on fiscal tax study that we're looking for. What are the, what are the RFPs?
Well, we had one price from RKG earlier this summer. I wanted to, I talked to your council about it. I wanted to fine tune it a little bit to, obviously with MBTA not on the table, fine tune that to existing zoning that we have and the existing units that are coming up. So we're just to see if we can get that price fine tuned, and then I'll have it in back in front of the council for the next meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on, policymaking committees are all pretty much meeting this week before the holidays. Old business, we keep a place at them there for middle school discussion and demolition, and we can announce now that there will be a special meeting. Not sure of the exact date, but it will be posted within the next two days, early in January, for a roundtable discussion to get more in depth as to the future use of the middle school site. Abandonment clause, this is, this came up at last council meeting, and just to, just to go over this in more detail, we had a town election last November, and part of that was a, were suggestions from the Charter Review Committee, which meets every five years. Because of COVID, it was, it was put off a little bit, so it came a little late this time, and there'll be another committee announced at the beginning of next year, which will be another five-year term, but five years since the inception, a five-year increment. One of the suggestions came out was to update or change the abandonment clause, which was written in the Charter back 20 years ago. That abandonment clause had stated that if a councillor is deemed to abandon their position if they miss more than half the regularly scheduled meetings over a calendar The Charter Review Committee, and it's been discussed many times over the years, but the Charter Community Committee decided that it would be a good idea to update that policy to change it to, instead of missing half the meetings over a calendar year, to missing either three consecutive regularly scheduled council meetings, or three meetings, 50% of the meetings, three meetings, over a three-month period. So that question came back to the council, it was agreed upon, it went on a ballot, it passed. So. It was agreed upon. It went on a ballot. It passed. So that was that. Now it gets tricky with the state. Anytime something gets on a ballot like that, it has to go to the state to get a home move petition, to get it changed. It came back to us. It didn't come back to us till, I believe it was July 29-ish. So July 29th, that became the law of the land, so to speak. That became the update in the charter. So as I constantly look at attendance, it came to my awareness that over a period from September, October, November, there were two councillors that, by the, the new rule of the charter, the abandonment clause had abandoned their positions. So, a secondary to that, it, it does state that a councillor, if a councillor misses three consecutive meetings, or 50% of the meetings, publicly, regularly scheduled meetings over a three-month period, they are deemed to have abandoned their post. We had two councillors that fit into that category. Now, one of the other things that was obviously very smart of committees to put in was that can be, there can be an exclusion if two-thirds of the councillors, so six councillors vote, to exclude that councillor from that fate. So now, looking at it, I, I believe that, you know, there's been so much that's happened this year, so much going on in the, in the town, in the state, in the country. This did not come back to us. We did not make a big announcement that this came back July 29th. So I would entertain a motion from a councillor to exclude the two councillors, Consul DeMarco, Consul to us, from the abandonment that they entered into, and put them back as full members on the, you know, to, to exclude them from that clause, and to state also that as of January 1st of 2025, everybody is made aware, everybody understands the guidelines, the expectations that are set, and we go forward in the new year with new rules. So is there a motion for exclusion? There's a motion by Consular Munson. There's a second by Consular Costigan. So there are, I would, I would ask for this vote, that there'd be seven councillors voting on this. I would ask for a roll call vote. We need six yes votes for exclusion.
Consul Tassinari?
Yes.
Consul Costigan?
Yes.
Consul Munson?
Yes.
Consul DeMarco?
Abstain.
Consul Ayala?
Yes.
Consul Swob?
Yes.
Consul to us?
Abstain.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Maturi?
Yes. The motion is passed. I thank them. There's just so much that goes on in people's lives. And again, this is something that's kind of slipped through, and, but we are all aware of the expectations going into the new year, and we are, we feel very confident that everybody's going to adhere to those expectations. So, thank you. Let's move on. Firehouse vote. Again, thank the council, thank the firefighters of Winthrop coming here to, to support themselves, which, again, there was a, there was a comment, mentioned that they shouldn't have had to do that, and, but I do thank them every minute of every day for what they do for us, as well as our police. New business, town council appropriate $30,000 from retained earnings and Rink Enterprise Fund extraordinary repairs and maintenance. I'm going to refer that to finance. Discussion on the advisory committee. I announced at the last council meeting that I want to enact a committee on affordable housing. I've decided to obviously continue with that, but I've had two emails in regards to people that are interested, and my expectation is to have five members on the committee, a councillor, a town manager, a representative, and three citizens. I'm going to announce that committee at our first meeting in January, when I also announce new committee appointments on the council. So again, if people have interest in that, please feel free to email myself for the council or the town clerk. I think that is something that, you know, it would be an advisory committee, and it was stated earlier in public comment, it's, it's something that I think is needed for the town. Again, more eyes on, on certain things always helps, and to get more information from, again, more expert-type people than ourselves at times is, is very worthwhile. So I look forward to starting that committee at the new year. Let's go to school override question. So I'm going to read, and I apologize for using my phone, but I didn't have time to, to send it, so this, to print it. So this came from the co-chair of the school committee last evening. The chair was unable to attend, and Jen, Jen lost her dad this past week, and my condolences and the condolences of the council go out to her and her family, so she's back home, Jen Powell, with her family to grieve and to handle that terrible situation. So Jen could not make the meeting last night, and Julie Barry stood in as co-chair and chaired the meeting. So I, I did receive an email this afternoon from Julie, which states this, "Following last night's school committee meeting, I am writing on behalf of the committee to request that an override proposal be brought before the full town council for a vote at tonight's meeting. During last night's session, we voted to place two related override questions on a ballot for an upcoming election. Below is a draft of the two questions to be included on the ballot. Includes the voting instructions to be also included on the ballot. The voting instructions recommend to be included on the ballot is the exact language that is advised by the Elections Committee Division of the Secretary of State's Office and included in the Division of Local Services, DLS. Mass Department of Revenues Proposition Two and a Half Ballot Questions, Requirements and Procedures, August 2017. Voter instructions. Question 1A and 1B." So they are requesting, just a little background, they are requesting a pyramid-type question in regards to an override. So there would be two questions. Question 1A and 1B are separate questions. You may vote for or against each question independently. Each question requires a majority of those voting on that question to pass. If more than one question passes, the question with the higher dollar amount would prevail. Now it goes on to say, question 1A, they are recommending that the, so question 1A would read, "Shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to assess an additional $4.95 million in real estate taxes and personal property taxes for the funding of the fiscal year 26 Winthrop Public Schools' operating budget? $3.5 million in the funding of a school stabilization fund, $1.45 million, to support the Winthrop Schools' future operational budgets. Yes or no? Question 1B, shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to assess an additional $3.5 million in real estate and personal property taxes for the funding of the fiscal '26 Winthrop Public Schools' operation budget? Yes or no? We are adopting a pyramid-type approach for those questions, which allows for flexibility in how voters respond, and acknowledges those who voted for the $4.9 million, $4.95 million override in the November election, and also acknowledged those who voted no by offering an option to vote for a lesser amount, $3.5 million in this case, and the continued option to vote no for either amount. Upon the completion of the voting process, if both questions result in a favorable vote, by that, they mean both render more yes than no votes, the one question with the highest dollar amount would prevail. So in that case, if both 1A and 1B pass for $4.9 million and for $3.5 million, the higher amount, regardless of which got more votes, as, as long as they both had more yes votes than no vote, the higher dollar amount would prevail, so the override would be for $4.95 million. Additionally, the school committee has requested to place these override questions on a separate ballot distinct from other town questions. We are requesting the town council's approval of both the pyramid approach and the proposed amounts, as well as the separate approval for a singular dedicated ballot for these questions. While we understand that the approval for separate ballot may not take place at tonight's meeting, we feel it is important to address this as soon as possible. Thank you, and let me know if there are any further questions. Otherwise, I would imagine the town council will be discussing and voting tonight. Thank you again, Julie Barry, co-chair, sorry, assistant chair of the, vice chair of the Winthrop School Committee. So what they are asking, what they are requesting is that we vote on a pyramid-type question. So that question would involve two amounts. 1A would be for $4.9 million, 1B would be for $3.5 million. A citizen can vote yes on both, yes and no, no and no, no and yes, however they choose to vote. This passed the school committee last evening. I'm gonna, I, I, out of respect for the school committee, I would ask the council to vote this up or down. If the council voted this up, we would discuss at our next meeting, hopefully, timing of when this would take place. If the council voted it down, for whatever reason, we would assumingly request that it immediately goes back to the school committee for an adjustment, depending on why the council voted in the negative, if it was to do so. Out of respect for the school committee, the school committee and the superintendent did an incredible job. They're, they're well-versed in this. They, the superintendent understands the numbers. And out of respect for the school committee, I had said that I would not entertain a motion to amend any of these numbers. So we're going to vote on what the school committee requested. The town would, again, the council has the option to say yes or no, and, you know, if it is no, they would ask, I'm sure, request information from the school committee. So I will ask for a motion to put that on the table. The motion by Vice President Belcher, a second by Consul DeMarco. So the motion, and this is only for the first motion, which is for the dollar amount. So this is asking for a pyramid override question. Question 1A would be if the town would support a $4.95 million override for the Winthrop Public Schools. Question 1B would be, would the town propose, would the town accept a request for a schools for a $3.5 million override? So it's on the table. Consul Tassinari?
Thank you, Council President. You're a member of the school committee, correct?
Correct.
So from, from what you've learned on that committee, how soon would we be back, would we be back at the table asking for another override, should that $3.5 million number pass?
You know, I am on the school committee. I incredibly support the need for additional funding for the schools. Asking, answering that question for the schools in a lot of departments is, is very hard to ascertain. There are so many changes that could occur. My personal belief is that I could, I could guarantee it won't last for 15 years. I feel it would, it would, you know, if I had to give an estimate, I would say three to five years. Now, you know, others will disagree with me. That's, knowing the numbers that I know, that's my best guess.
So I don't just talk to you as a councillor, I also talk to you as a parent of a sixth grader in the middle school and a freshman in the high school. I'm actually missing my daughter's first high school basketball game. She made the JV team. So if anybody knows how the JV team did tonight, I missed the game because I'm here. Make no mistake about it, okay, the schools need the 4.9. They absolutely need the 4.9. Now, I also hear you in that the public and my constituents voted against the 4.9 in the last election, okay? I actually appreciate what the school committee did in saying, hey, you know what? We still want the 4.9, okay? It's not that the, that the 3.5 is okay. We're, we're going to be back doing this again at some point, okay? The 3.5 is giving you another option. It's a Band-Aid. Instead of being a, a long-term solution, the 3.5 is a Band-Aid. So we need this 4.9. The, the, the kids need the 4.9. My kids need it, your kids need it. That's what it is. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, because, you know, as a town council, we're elected by our constituents. We're put up here by you. You, you know what? The school committee is also elected by the public, all right? This is what they recommend. This is what you put them in there for, to come up with a solution like this. They've done that. So out of respect for the community, I'm going to vote to move this forward and put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. Like Consular DeMarco mentioned, the, the school committee knows what they're talking about. The superintendent knows what she's talking about. These numbers aren't pulled out of thin air. I, I feel strongly that the 4.95 is the number we should be reaching for. I'm slightly concerned about doing the pyramid approach in that people will say, you asked for 4.95, now you can do it for 3.5. Why did you ask for that much? And if we vote no, are you going to say we can do it for two? You know, so I, I think it sets a slippery precedent for things like this. That being said, I'm not an expert on these things. The school committee is far more versed than I am, and out of respect for them, I, I would accept their recommendation. But I, I do think that's something we should seriously consider, and if we move forward with this as part of the public outreach campaign, we need to really explain what the difference between those two numbers is, what it looks like, when we'll be coming back, what it means as far as the availability of programming in the schools, or whatever the, the cuts may be, and knowing that it's all hypothetical, right? You don't know until you know. But we can get a good idea of, of the difference in what our schools would look like at 3.5 and 4.95. So, again, the school committee is far more versed in this than I am, so I, I support them in their decisions. But I think we really, really need to pay close attention to how we're packaging this type of ballot question.
Counsel Swob?
This is a, this is a tough one, because I'm all in for 4.9. It was in for higher. But, but I do want to make sure the voters understand, it would be better if they vote, if they want 4.9, that they also vote, vote for the 3.5. So we vote for the 3.5 and the 4.9. That is a very hard issue for them to understand, because that, you know, so I don't know how we're going to explain that, but you all, I'm, I'm in to try to help you, all of us, understand how that would work. That's what the problem with the pyramid scheme, scheme, yeah.
Yeah.
The pyramid, sorry.
Multiple choice.
Please, please don't, please don't record that. But, but what, what the pyramid vote does, and, and it is really critical that we get this one right. And so, we all have to try to figure that out, if, for those of you who are interested in a 4.9.
Consul Ayala?
My colleagues on either side are very persuasive. I'm at 4.9 as well. I am very concerned that this could be confusing. However, if this is the way that the school committee wants to go, I'm happy to do it. But more importantly, we heard today really persuasive testimony from the parents, and I think that is critical. And one of you, I can't remember which one of you, said that we, the nine people up here, need to be part of the solution of getting to yes with the town. And I think that is so right. It is incredibly right. Portion of success, if each one of us nine is pretending this is our reelection campaign, for those of us who feel like they actually want to have another term with this stuff here, it's a little insane, but that's okay. I think it would be helpful if somehow, because we have public meeting things we have to worry about, come to the council. If this thing is going to get on the ballot, come to the council and tell us how the key features work, armist with this stuff. Because we talk probably to a different constituency than the schools' folks talk to. And the schools' folks talk to a lot of people, right? But, you know, Richard Gill knows who the people I talk to, and a lot of them don't have kids in school. They're sort of done with that, but still, they're persuadable. So please feel free to come and educate us on how we can do it. In my mind, the big switch, and I may be wrong on this, is what does this thing we call a stabilization fund do? I think I understand what it does, but the name is awkward. It's not a normal term that people hear. So to figure out how to communicate that to people, that it really does allow this one vote to have stable resources over five years, right, which is with the- Which is what the, the town council president is projecting. So there are a couple of sort of talking points that we need to be able to get out into the field and to be part of your team. And we want you to help, give us the, the, the training to be effective.
Councilor Swob again.
Just one more point. I, I've been walking, I've been walking for you all. And I encourage all of you, if you have a chance, to do the same. If you feel this vote is important, because talking to people, once we're more educated about it, is so helpful, I think. And those that I think we, we were able to reach and talk to, I'm encouraged that they, that they did vote for it. So please join me on the streets, so to speak.
Councilor DeRoof.
Thank you, Council President. Two quick comments. One is that what's nice about our being able to put this on a local ballot versus having it be part of the state ballot like we did in November, is that we have the additional ability as a council and as a town clerk to be able to write up the impact statement that many of you will remember is on the, on all the ballot questions. So obviously, back in November, you all remember, all there was, was two or three lines on there that said, bam, here's your 4.9 million, please pass it. We have an ability to, to Councilor Iello's point, be more descriptive about what this is. And I'm hoping that the statement that we end up making on the, on the ballot does include not only the explanation of what it's for and what a stabilization fund is, to your point, but also what are the costs? What is the impact of voting no? One of the gentlemen that was up speaking earlier tonight, I think summed it up best. He said, when that vote was taken in November and the override went down, I immediately looked at my wife and my kids and said, can we stay here? So I think that sums it up. There's probably few things more important to a town, whether that's property values, the success of the children as they graduate and move into the world, most importantly. We could go through a whole number of other impacts, but that's a piece that I really hope. I personally think that's what's gonna determine the up or down of the vote. How well can we explain it prior to the vote? And then when people walk into the booth, what are they reading? Maybe I'm an election nerd, but I know when I walked in in November, I read my, my little red book on all the ballot questions and I read the impact statements before I walked in. And then I gave it another quick read before I cast my vote on each of those ballot questions. So just to echo the comments that some others have made, encourage everybody to really understand what the money is for. And I'll, I'll second what was said earlier by one of the counselors in terms of Superintendent Howard. An incredibly blessing, we are all incredibly blessed that you are our superintendent. And to Councilor Belcher's point, when you put forth that you need 4.9, you truly need 4.9. I remember when we were going through the budget process last year, from April to June. And for those who aren't familiar, when that time happens, the Finance Commission, which is a combination of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Finance, as well as the Finance Subcommittee of the Council, combined, we meet every Thursday night, April through June. And it results in the council passing the budget at the end of June. I remember when Superintendent Howard came to us and explained the, the school budget. Outstanding presentation. I've seen presentations in, I think, four or five other towns, the best that I've seen. So thank you for that. And when she asks for 4.9, she means it. And we should support her in whatever way possible. Thank you.
Councilor Mazzan.
Thank you. My priority was to just make sure that it was gone on a separate ballot and to get it done in a timely fashion for the teacher's sake and the parents' sake. I mean, I, you can't get more close to home than someone actually having a conversation with their spouse going, do we need to go? Do we need to really start looking for some other place? So I think the consequences are very real. In my opinion, the consequences would be really well said if you could say something along the lines of, very point blank so people understand it when you're disseminating the information. We're probably gonna lose about two teachers per grade. And the class sizes will go up about seven kids per classroom. It's something that people can understand and, and get behind. So I guess my priority is the separate ballot and the timing of getting it done. As far as the amount, I would have preferred $1 amount, simply because, for clarity's sake. I think that we shouldn't call it the pyramid scheme anymore. We should be calling it ranked voting.
We don't call it a scheme.
Or pyramid vote. It doesn't need to be pyramid anything, because it leads to that. I think it should be called ranked voting. So the number of most votes gets it. So, but out of respect to the school committee and the superintendent, I would go ahead and move this forward. I did wanna just make a, a quick note. I, I was at the school committee meeting last week and I, I was speaking on behalf and making comments as a parent, because I still have a child in the school system. And I, I, I wanted to apologize because I, I misspoke. And I was talking about voting during the winter because there were some, you know, gonna be less people. I was, I really apologize because I don't wanna sound like I'm disenfranchising any voters. Really what I was trying to say was, is that the presidential election was 9,400 voters and it got lost on a three-page ballot. This override question was the last question on three pages of so many decisions and so much text. I think there was decision overload. And I think that it deserves its own ballot. And, and so I, I encourage people to get informed and I hope as many informed voters can come. And I hope, and even if you're not in town, you can ask for an absentee ballot. So with that, I would say I support what's happening.
Councilor Kostka.
Yeah, regarding the 4.95, fully behind it. One of the parents here sort of struck me, sort of his words of an, of an eroding quality of the schools. To think that Winthrop is an eroding quality of schools. It will be if we, if we don't get this money, the 4.95. And we need this 4.95 to strengthen the schools as opposed to having them erode. It's a great community and, as I've said all along, you know, communities judge upon how it treats its children as well. So we need this 4.95 and fully behind it.
Thank you. I just have a few things to say and then I'm gonna ask the superintendent if she would like to speak before we make a vote. Again, this is, I've been doing this for a long time. There is absolutely zero doubt in my mind that the schools need more funding. For a variety of reasons. I also have to be cognizant of the fact that the town voted 39 days ago and, you know, 60% of the 9,200 that voted voted against it. There could be a multitude of reasons for it. It could be a lengthy ballot. It could be just misery with just stuff going on in the world. It could be that they didn't understand the question. It could be they got it confused with other question. Or it could be that they just thought, as much as they thought it was needed, it was just too much of an ask. So I have to value and respect that decision. And I applaud the school committee for, for giving an option. So I, I know there were people that are passionate about the 4.9. And somebody said the difference between the 4.9 and the 3.5 obviously is $1.4 million. The difference isn't really affected in fiscal '26 budget. The, the thought there is to start a stabilization fund that would help fund future budget shortfalls. You know, there, there were many things that could happen with a school budget as would happen with a town budget. If there's turnbacks, that, that, it helps the following year slightly. If there's retirements, it helps the following year slightly. There is absolutely zero doubt that there is a need for the schools on, on, I'm sure the superintendent will state, and, you know, on her initial budget assessments for next year, their, their 3.5 million shot to have, and this isn't, again, getting to a, somebody said that, she's probably six months ago, about a needs, I think, I think it was the Finance Commission Chair that said, you know, this isn't a desired budget, this is just bare bones, basically. And, you know, at some point, and, and this isn't even it, but at some point, the town has to make a decision on, on what they value. Do, you know, as, as much as obviously English, history, science, math is incredibly important. So are the arts, so is music, so athletics, so extracurricular activities. And sharp, I mean, stuff that has just seemed to have gone by the wayside. And, and we have to be cognizant of that and start making decisions on that. This isn't a time for that. This is a time for maintain, to maintain what we have. I do get wary about two-dollar amounts. I think it can be confusing. But I do really value the fact that they're giving a, a more affordable dollar amount. I think people in this town have shown over the last 20-plus years that they do value education. They've built three new schools, they've built a new athletic facility. So the, they value education. And I'm sure the superintendent would agree with that. They don't come to this ask lightly. And the fact that it's been 15 years is, is great. But the fact is, it would have been 11 or 12 if it wasn't for COVID. The need is there. The electorate, the citizens, have to ask questions. They have to get accurate answers. And the superintendent is as transparent as any in giving those answers. And I encourage people to get educated and understand the need is there. Again, I'm going to support the schools like I always have. I, I respect the school a lot for, for giving that lower option. I think you have to respect and, and value what the, what the citizen said 40 days ago. So with that, I will give the superintendent the floor to make a closing argument, so to speak.
So thank you for allowing me to give you some information. First, I'd like to thank you for this campaign, maybe on the backbone of the override campaign. And I'm hoping that my motivation to continue to get up and do this good work. I think if most of you know of the strategic plan by nature, you've seen the school strategic plan, you've seen our priorities. And you've seen the process of what we go through in order to make sure that we check off priorities when we finish them. But more importantly, that we identify a priority. We stick to that priority and try not to let other things win away until we have fully accomplished that. Our goal is not to be little bit, we do a lot of things. Our goal is to be a leader in the whole. And I think we have done a great job of that goal as a campaign, for the override campaign and as a school district in our budget planning, our budget forecast, and certainly the transparency of the Winthrop Public Schools budget. I've, I've got some, you know, questions and concerns about the pyramid-style override questions. So because I'm a boss and I get to make executive decisions, we now could be changing it to a tiered override system. And I can do that because that's what I do by the state of Massachusetts. So it's called a pyramid slash tiered. So we're gonna make that call right now if that's what we're gonna do. So in, in contemplating how, how we're gonna move forward, the, the override committee, myself and several of the superintendents, did a squad analysis on the last override. And we did that because we're data-driven learners. And because things that are dirty and data-driven typically get you the best outcome. It's usually leading to a certain degree of success. The factual data, they're not assumptions or things. So we did this squad analysis, which looks at the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats of something that we just accomplished. That you've just found, you can try to do the override campaign. And it's not done to point many of the people who are upon that vote at fault. It's to look for opportunity. And it's to really identify those things if you're gonna go up on a override question. That people who even identified that you need to have anything something different, this is new work, or you missed an opportunity that you didn't know you had. So those conversations lead to that strategic plan of moving forward. So we did that. Some of the things we figured out and, and we knew was that 3,500 people voted for a 4.95 million dollar override, which is amazing. We also identified as everybody else did, that, you know, the election timing was sort of a perfect storm. You know, the state first question was on there. You dissertation of, of what you're going for and what the yes vote means if you vote yes and what a no vote means if you vote no. The state also does not allow a vocal question to have that same opportunity to do that, to have that same doubt. So we, we recognize that as a threat to the, to the original vote. So in, in crafting what type of vote we wanted to move forward with, we wanted to one, recognize, this is in the school committee, but also using the results of this squad analysis, we wanted to recognize 3,500 people who stepped up and came out and voted yes, knowing that a $4.9 million budget is a financial action plan for the future and not a Band-Aid in the moment of time. It would allow three, the 3.5 million that we recognized as a potential deficit for '26 to be put towards the operational budget for '26, while it would allow the additional $1.4 million to go into stabilization account to then allow us to go into the future and not have to come back up to the town for an override within a 2-year time period. So that was step one. We also wanted to recognize the people who voted no. And as people have said, I believe it was about 60%, they voted no, and certainly they had a reason to vote no. Whether that reason was the cluster they were in when they had to vote, we ran so long, everything, like they didn't have a good decision to make. Today, the questions are crazy. Whatever their decision to vote no, we don't know. Because we can't ask that question. And then we can't go back and look at any data on the election. I voted no because I didn't have the money. I voted no because I didn't want to be here. I voted no because I didn't understand what the hell they were asking me. We can't get that statistical data. So that's not something that in the process that we were for, make assumptions. So recognizing those people that voted no, we felt that they, they should have a chance. We're gonna put this vote out, not to have to vote on only one question. Maybe they would vote yes, maybe if the number was low. Maybe they'll still be a complete no vote. But if we're gonna acknowledge the opportunity, people, the 3,500 that came out and voted yes, we have to draw the no people and give them an option. So how do you know if the number is low if they would have not given it an opportunity? They can still come out and vote no. Or they can come out and say, please, thank you. Because had you presented me with another member in the beginning that was lower than the 4.95, I may have voted no. What I tell you, I had, I was skeptical about multiple questions. Because on a good day, people are anxious when they go to the polls. The other thing we, we researched with the, with the tiered vote, sort of tiered style of a vote, was that you can put an explanation on it. So you can craft a question that it is easy to read and understand. You can also put what happens if you vote yes, this is the result. Should you vote no, this is the result. State of Massachusetts binds you by identifying, and people say identifying the actual cuts. There are certain things you cannot write, but you can give enough of a statement that will let people understand why they're there and what they're going for. And if I vote yes, what does that mean? And if I vote no, what does it mean? Also, on a single ballot election that we, we asked for, we have, there are directions that are actually required to put on a tiered ballot. And it tells people actually how the voting process. And so that will be on the ballot, what you can vote for. Then the last thing we learned was that in a tiered, in a tiered process, that if folks voted for both questions yes and both questions passed, that the higher amount was the prevailing amount. People still have, so there's an option for yes. So now we're widening options of the outcome of the vote that could be beneficial. You can have yes on question one could pass, question one A could pass for a $4.95. And one B could fail, you get a $4.95. One A could fail at $4.95 and one B could pass, you get a $3.5. But with those multiple options, or, or they could both fail and you get nothing. What I do know is if you put one question with one amount up there and it fails, you actually limited yourself to have any other opportunity. So I think this gives us the best opportunity for the community. And the other thing that, you know, came out of the analysis that we did, and when we talked about going out for a tiered override, there's lots of conversation around, you know, this does, doesn't just benefit the schools. If you think of it, bringing people to the polls to focus in on one thing, make a decision on one item, be able to really have a thoughtful process. Should that... decision on one item, be able to really have a thoughtful process, should that pass, the statement that we made earlier about the town, if it doesn't pass, having to go to other departments and diminish the budgets of other departments is removed from the equation if the school district gets an override. And nobody can be happier about that than me because I learned about 15 years ago, um, under the guidance and, and town council presidency of, of somebody who's related to me that fitting town departments against each other is not good. And, and this town has not had a couple of times played against each other in the last 15 to 20 years. The relationships are there. We work with the fire and police department every single day. I want to be the last department who wins a vote that negatively impacts the people that saved my life and protect my children and come and answer our calls when there's a problem, we want our own, it's a second. I want to impact them. They can read us. They allow us the function as a whole community and as a whole town. So if the school override does pass, it does take the pressure off of having to go after other departments and it takes that, we, we have a lot of issues. We have a lot of, you know, obviously multiple issues from the truck car tonight, you're fighting for the fire station to 73,000 other items. It now removes the school district from the list of things that have to be prioritized on the side of the town and it eliminates the need for the town to have to dig deeper into other people's budgets. So I can tell you that the question can be very clear. I can tell you that the strategy behind how we were going to ask the council to approve this question was thoughtful, it was a process, it was done by looking at data and it involved multiple opinions. It wasn't just a person, people who came through the door and said, this is how we want it done and we said it tomorrow, so we listened. This was a lot of thoughtful reflection, um, and it can be directions on that. And like I've said, a lot of people have opinions about how the override committee should move forward and what they should be telling people. I'm not sure everyone knows what they actually already did. I do and the school committee does because we do it and we did it through our analysis and we praise people for what they did and we acknowledge the fact that we all together and we look and we have that done. Again, it's a strategic plan that, you know, I think reflected in the school district over the last couple of years, that kind of plan works. And when it fails, you get back up and you figure out what you need to move forward and you create another strategy. And so that's the methodology behind the type of question. I know people think it's confusing, but really able to define it on the ballot that it should be pretty easy to understand, especially when somebody says if we vote yes, this is what you're voting for and you vote no, this is what your action is. So I hope, I know that was long-winded. I've spent a lot of time on this and we'll get you on the floor.
Thank you, Lisa. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation from the school committee to present a tiered override system to the town. It would include question one A, if the town was in favor for $4.95 million override for the Winthrop Public Schools for fiscal '26, including a 1.4, out of that 4.9, 1.4 million would be allocated to a, uh, education stabilization account. And question one B would be would the town support a $3.5 million override for a fiscal '26 budget for the Winthrop Public Schools? We have discussed it. If anyone has any further questions for myself or for the superintendent, you can ask now. If not, we would move to a vote and I would ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Tassanieri.
Yes.
Counselor Costigan.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Aiello.
Yes.
Counselor Swope.
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz.
Yes.
Ms. President Belcher.
Yes.
President Leteri.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you to superintendent. The second part of that request was to discuss a timing. You know, I, I would like, we're, we're looking for information from Kessel and Booths on timing for Fire Station. We don't know if it, we, we're looking also at costs for special elections. We potentially could have a 3A question on a ballot. We know the timing has to be in the first quarter, so we, we would, you know, for contractual obligations that the school has in, in regards to, um, notifications that they would have to put out to staff, um, in the regards in, in the possibility of an override not passing. So we understand that there's a sense of urgency regarding this. There also needs to be time for the schools to get the word out and the understanding and the education process as there does for the town, for Fire Station. We are one community. We all are one. We don't want to pit departments against each other. So I think, uh, as we get more information, probably the first meeting in January, we will have a discussion and hopefully a decision on timing of this. It will be in the first quarter of fiscal, uh, of calendar '25 and we will put that on the, uh, on the agenda for the next meeting. I will also talk to the super-
Motion to, to hold that vote February 25th for the school committee.
I'm not going to accept the motion now for the schools.
All right. Thanks.
Um, I will also ask the superintendent and the school committee chair if there's a possibility that they would like to have a joint meeting with the, uh, town council to have more of a discussion. Again, the school committee is a great venue for people to get information. The town council seems to get a little more of attention and audience for whatever reason. So we would use any pulpit we can just to, again, just to educate people and let them know. So that's what we would do with that and hopefully we might be able to have a special meeting before our regularly scheduled meeting on the 6th of January. We could have a lot of meetings in January, but it's all for a good purpose and, uh, the funds are definitely needed. Public comment, uh, public relations, just again with, uh, Christmas coming up, the town hall will be closing Christmas Eve at noon, close Christmas Day, open the 26th from 8:00 to 4:30. For New Year's, town, uh, town hall be closing New Year's Eve at 4:30, be closed New Year's Day and open the 2nd of January from 8:00 to 4:30 PM. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Public comment, please.
I'm, I am.
Second public comment.
I am sorry. I respect that. Thank you. Public comment.
Mr. Dowd.
That wasn't very nice, Jim.
I, I mean, to think I did that.
I know. I, I see on the agenda, you kind of worded it together there so you could skip. Thank you very much, Jim, for letting me speak.
My pleasure.
Jack Dowd, Precinct One. Oh, first I want to acknowledge, Lisa, thank you very much for all your efforts. I hope you do get involved with asking, uh, Massport to help you with money for the school system. You'd be the perfect person. All right. So, uh, I've been, I've been going to meetings since 2017 when, uh, Mr. Aiello proposed putting, um, over 100 units on Ingleside Park. He had a big, uh, stage setting and he, and he had a video and, um, I forget what I called it then, but it was, um, a monstrosity. That's what I called it. I remember that. And we haven't heard much from it. So you can't build anything on Ingleside Park. Can't change the use of Ingleside Park unless you go through the process of Article 97 disposition of land. I've been saying that since 2017. Something else I've been saying since 2017 is to get a survey of the property that you're Mr. Munson says he has the survey. I'd like Mr. Munson to produce the survey at the next council meeting. Mr. Aiello backed him up, saying there was a survey done. I'd like Mr. Aiello to also bring, uh, that survey to the next council meeting so everybody can understand what's going to happen with the property at 141 Pauline Street. In my opinion, they should take down all three buildings. There's many ways to service the skating rink, uh, locker room situation. All those buildings are 60, 70 years old. They should come, they all should come down. I have a quote from a, uh, construction company to remove, uh, those three buildings. It's old, so I would suggest that you get another quote to remove all three buildings. 141 Pauline Street is the classroom site. It's in dispute about, uh, a survey. So I guess we're going to get the survey handled within the next two weeks so that everybody can understand what can be sold, what can be used, what it can be used for, what is Ingleside Park. I've been saying this since 2017 with the planning board and other groups. I wish someone would take the initiative to hire a surveyor and I've got quotes for the survey of 141 Pauline Street. Uh, it's, it's between $3,000 and $5,000. And then everybody in the town can understand what's for sale, what it can be used for, et cetera. I've been saying this since 2017. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schmidt and then Kathleen.
Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five. I sent an email to the council and town manager before about, uh, money from, in the state for demolition of the middle school site and I brought it since it was on the agenda. There were three separate items, two in the housing bond bill, one the economic development bill. The amounts were $1 million, $2 million and $1 million. Some were tied to housing, some weren't. Just wanted to pass that on. Very happy also that you, uh, passed a school override question as well as the, uh, question on the fire station, but ballot questions are very, very difficult. I worked with, with a guy who made millions of dollars on ballot questions. Very hard because it's not like a candidate, you might disagree on one issue, but you like him as a person. It's all about numbers. The, uh, fire station lost 64, 36. The schools did better, 58, 42. But it's a lot of work. You have to make it personal. That's why I suggested the firefighters get out and talk to people. I would say the same thing with teachers as well as the parents. I think, I think they're winnable. I think they should be on separate ballots so people can focus that way. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen Cappuccio, 49 Waldemar Ave. We had, or the council had discussed a little bit about, um, the old middle school site and I just really need to applaud President Leteri. So on November 5th, 2024, this was a post I did a couple of weeks ago, was 11 years since we as a community passed the vote to have the old, old new middle, to have the new middle school built. President Leteri has been an absolute champion and one of the few who has always brought this to the table. We have discussed, you know, as a community in different forums, you know, what to do with the, what to do with the old middle school site. And I just, I, I, I thank you, Jim, because you have always kept this site in the forefront. You have not ignored it. You have always talked about it. You know, it's one of my biggest pet peeves that it's been 11 years that we've known that it's been sitting vacant. So I thank you because you have always brought that forth. You know, another thing, Lisa Howard, how fortunate are we in this community to have this amazing professional who supports our children with dignity, with expertise, with professionalism, with numbers, with facts? We are so lucky to have this amazing professional in our community. You know, people can talk about, you know, and I've thought about it too and Lisa and I've talked about it, you know, it's been 15 years since we have an override. Was that a good idea? Was that a bad idea? I don't know. I'm not a finance person. But what this woman has done for our community in saving money, and I don't want to say robbing Peter to pay Paul because Peter knows, my mother would say that. What she did with certain funds to make sure she didn't have to come to us to ask for money is phenomenal. This woman has had webinars and Zooms and gone to farmers markets and different things to educate our community. We are so lucky to have you. We are so lucky to have you. You know, I mean, again, I'm not a numbers person, but I know the magic that you've done to protect this community. And again, it's not just protecting our kids. It's protecting our home values. It's protecting people wanting to come to Winthrop. It's protecting teachers wanting to stay here and administrators wanting to stay here. So you rock and-
I'm rock because I'm surrounded by people who-
And you are, you know, by the grace, oh, it's like grace of God, that's probably a bad thing to say, but, but, but you have an awesome support system, but thank you because you have, you have absolutely put forth why we need this override. Again, like you, I support 10 million, but you have done the work and I thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Any more public comments? I think I'm going to ask WCAT for a copy of this tape so I could use it in the future when I get bashed every meeting and I'll ask for a copy for Lisa as well. Hey, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counselor DeMarco, second by Counselor Castanza. Castanza. Counselor Castanza. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good job.